New water skiing.
No.
I was tubing on Saturday and I couldn't move for a couple.
Did you?
And I. Not really.
I started trying. I have reps in the eye.
Uh oh.
Yeah. Fall more into the sitting in the chair, wine drinking than the out on the tube behind a boat girl.
I say on train drinking.
Um, on train drinking, not boating and tubing.
In my name. Yeah. And then, but yeah, I just wanted in the wrong.
One. P M, July the twenty six, twenty twenty three. Respectfully acknowledge that the land in which we gather is the unceded traditional territory of this. Uh, approval of the agenda. Uh, approval of the agenda that the. Pump track update be removed from the agenda. And recommendation that the committee of the whole meeting agenda for July twenty six, twenty twenty three be approved as amended. Counselor McCabe, Counselor Rich, all in favor, carried. Okay, adoption of the minutes, recommendation of the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting held on June twenty eighth, twenty twenty three be adopted, Counselor Bushel. Counselor Beach, all in favor. Carrie, thank you. Okay, we're gonna go into delegations. We're gonna start with the Sicamous R C M P detachment quarterly report, and that's gonna be presented by. Corporal Andrew McLean, who is replacing Sergeant Murray until mid-September. Corporal McLean is now part of our detachment. He is replacing uh, Wade Fisher, so he is new to Sicamous and part of our community now, so let's welcome Corporal McLean.
Everyone. Mayor and Council. So maybe I'll because I'm new here and nobody is really ready, I'll just start. It was properly. Uh, the. From our transfer here to Sicamous to Casper's, uh, as of May fifteenth. Which happens at the base side of the. Um, prior to that, um, the seminar, Percy P for the last. It did eight years down the. Then there are some years. I will just. Done her. You're here. This is Benner, uh, very family. The building needs. Know each other, but being, uh, so. Love living in the. True swap and the family area. Um, so I guess with that, I'll, uh, get started into the. Presentation here of the quarterly. Heard him reveal about me to present it on his behalf as. Uh, from when the word of a century is off, I'm told. Mid-December, it's already been a toll, and then after that, he'll be just been off like the reason people. Uh, I am the acting sergeant in this place at this time. For duty. Uh, so Sicamous has identified three priorities. Our objectives for this fiscal year. Uh, number one is contributing to road safety and certainly, you know, was then why is he. Is looking for ten, uh, traffic staff from each member per month, average, to try and help with that road safety. Uh, this third one is. Please visibility downtown area of the beach parks and on the lake, so that includes, uh, phone controls. Uh, vehicle controls and their local roles of way. And then the third one is, uh, communicating effectively, and that includes a meeting with inside agencies, so that will be probation, I know, because we have. Number that is higher than the normal starts people in the Sicamous area that are on other SRS probation, so we've been working fast on monitoring these people and. Um, provide or, uh, the current checks on them. The second is, uh, media releases for incidents that occur in your area, and the third is.
Supporting.
The number one. Stand up and hit on game. You see there the. One prime fact. Information. That it's been written from the board, and one of the stars that they're fair. Thousands of. Secretized, I think, that you like. So that's again, you define members more, you know. But the package there is like, like the. I feel you. You know, the. My work is all about. But it's. On her, uh, uh. One thing of note in that, if you scroll in further there, is the, uh, impairments. So for the vast quarter of April to June, two thousand and twenty-two, we only had three compared driver files, whereas this year we have twelve. So there's been a substantial increase with that, and a majority of those, I would say, is twenty-four. Drive home prepared by drugs. So there's been a significant spike in that, uh, but here, trolling and doing with that, and trying to, uh, throw that out, but yeah. But I think, um, we think this, we've got two major infections for that period. We heard we had. Why we can't seven day, the barrier might increase. Then on June thirty seventh, due to this thing, the vehicle rollover increased on the highway near the. Drivers found it prohibited, regardless of insurance. Tickets were issued and given according to. Top of it, uh, minor injuries in that brush. A break in hours. May twentieth, there was a fence called the barricade campground, uh, shed open with some people taken. Uh, no, sorry, five to eight hours. And then that took vehicles. Uh, maybe thirty-three, it's not real strong, nine, one point. On May twenty ninth. Pickup stolen from the Johnson, your great campground, and she's reluctant to deal with it, who was later recovered, abandoned. First. It's a concern. On June nineteenth, uh, here, uh, the morning, I think, over the east, from the northern of the. The vehicle was located next to the channel, uh, submerged in water, but it was for lunch. Um, if either. You drive the vehicle, reported I C B C as suspicious, uh, because we got video from one of the households, uh, showing someone intentionally, I see, driving it, launching it into the water. Then first getting out of the water, so that had been reported and. And then, uh, May second. Little murder police incident involving a male in a truck at the seven eleven. Uh, this saw kind of link of tree. Uh, it was. Us the insurance with, uh, the passenger vessel truck, which also led to other files in Denver, so I could get that right, I was involved in getting. Power robbery files. Could get on the road. Um, there's another file that I want to talk about this top of this list, and it's one that I have been developing as the. Uh, acting sergeant at that point, that occurred on June nineteenth, and I apologize for not getting this. You're married or anything. That's involved, and it's one, I know it's. Not in the town jurisdiction of, on the scene, that everyone here is aware of the incident that happened, it kind of started in San, in the Sicamous area. And ended up there, and a lot of people were talking about it. I have since had representatives come from the community to talk with me, the detachment. About our features, well, uh, location and how they, as a community, have dealt with that situation, and they're in a little better how to deal with it. So I can give a lot of details about the incident, because there's criminal charges coming out of this, uh, out of Florida, that's where the incident started, and, um, so I can't talk about a lot of the details yet. So it hasn't come before the course, but I can give you kind of a brief, uh, synopsis or summary as to what happened there, and, uh, there was a media release on that giving out these details, so. Altered it in full, um. Email, suicidal, maybe a threat for their cell phone and court please, and. Through investigation, uh, and several. Stopovers. Yeah, the whole was coming back this way, uh, the emergency. Response team, their team, or public man, call on the SWAT, uh, located her traveling, so, uh, ninety-seven A, just departing out of Sicamous here. And we're able to, the people each end able to hard block container it. Uh, danger, and then she turned into the response point. Uh, redemption, so at that point, uh, where we had the road closures, ninety-seven A was closed, and then swamped to twenty fifteen, are basically contained and locked down. So at that point, we dealt with, um, highway closures and a lot of people, um, that lived in that area, maybe a little bit disgruntled, that they couldn't get back to the residence or couldn't get out of the area. Uh, we, at that time, we about to try to explain to them that it's not a issue of safety to the public, but we need to contain this person, and the only way we could do that. Is by curb blocking entrance and exit out of the response point subdivision. And doing that, because we knew she was in there somewhere, but we didn't know where, uh, so then we just kept narrowing in, and then a lot of the public residents, they were seeing. Emergency response teams walking around, they're police dogs, they didn't know what was going on, uh, but as I explained to the residents after, we don't have time to. Go around knocking door to door and say, hey, there's something ongoing here, we have an active situation, an active threat, and we use the PC to immediately contain. And which we did very successfully, where vehicles located down by on the beaches, and the emergency team went in, take her and took her into custody. And at that point, everything was all back up, so that fire already shut down for approximately a couple hours while this was all happening, but it ended safely, not in the state of the hospital. And dealt with, of course, as to. Here's from that. So I guess I just want to bring that to everyone's attention, um. We can't really be going around knocking door to door, spending an hour, two hours, maybe, telling everyone, hey, something going on, we have to deal with the threat first, and I think. Uh, there's no real ways for us to communicate this to the public. I know it was brought up about, I mean, like the alert stop on that. On your cell phones and coming out of no social, that was brought up with a couple people, and I said, yes, I already found that as a tool that we can use, but because the public is not in a danger. Uh, many people rest for supportive, probably, I don't have data for it. So, in dealing with that, if we contain her and ask everybody to, which other causes, and wait everyone to tell. Where it's been given, that's safe, and that is the best solution at this point. So. After a while, I can have a very focused, right now, there was a tension and. And if anyone has any questions on that, I can. Uh, but the next page here, uh, shows some of the breakdown statistics on the different types of, kinds of files. With that. For the quarter of April, May, June, third, twenty twenty-three, the district year, the Paris, of those. Um, I don't know if I need to go through all of them. Very, if you go through all the totals are there, but I guess the thing I'm gonna highlight on there, and I think it's on the next page, is the total calls for service. That is in twenty twenty-three for that quarter, we have ten quarter fifty-two calls for service. Um, so. Year before was five hundred and forty-five. I'm sorry.
The other way, yes.
This year is five hundred and forty-five calls, first last year, four, so that the. Twenty-five percent increase in calls, and still dealing with the same amount of resource to deal with that, so it has made us substantially more busy. The next thing I'll speak about is resources, so we currently have. One coastal law funding. Rent to leave as of today, actually, uh, so he's off for. Three to six months, hasn't been determined, as I said earlier, Sergeant McPhee is off, um. So September, mid-September, or the office, and then after that, we just ran late, the office, so. Uh, recovery. Things is every month, so. January, like. And then. Sergeant. And then the lot section there is criminal code charges. So for that quarter, we had eight criminal charges on different batteries, different quarter, most charges result of, uh. That criminal graph and the salt period probation. That the whole property goes suspended. But with that, um. We finished. Presenting the quarter report, I started coming with this, made here, and I guess at this point.
Thank you, Sergeant McPhee, or sorry, um, Corporal McLean. Does counsel have any questions? Have you, sorry. Are the gentleman is off on paternity, will he eat? So we have five, he's gone, does someone coming in to replace him, or we're down four?
We're down to four, so that's four of convos, and then plus myself as corporal, and then we have coastal picture of the judges. So, um, there is. Five of us active with one finger down.
But is that our, like, our regular minus one, or? Or they've brought someone in, uh, they, they, okay, okay, so we are, okay, thank you.
So we were fully staffed with everything rest settled. Now we're operating in five.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Bushel.
Thank you for the chair, um. Yeah, Corporal, uh, and Andrew, I'm just gonna ask, um, it's probably not your, uh, area, um, just out of two mile, uh, just past, it's outside our boundaries. There's a little beach there, uh, about five hundred yards past the district boundary, that's an encampment there starting to form, I'm not sure if you're aware of it, and just, just wanted to give you a heads up.
Yes, I was there Monday night.
Oh, we're in, okay, this, I wasn't.
We got the files through the. They came through by laws more, I got more, uh, prepares to this. Yeah, I attended there, I went, there was no one there, I went through everything, nothing to show any identification of us, who was there, um, I'm probably, I'll try and follow up, but. What, as I'm new here, what? Who has here even stood without a team, uh? Like a center, and we have to see if there, who we look out for that year.
We generally, the, uh, district puts out the, uh, the order for the public works folks to go out and gather up the. The camp and dispose of it.
So even though it's just outside the actual district and responsibility, we're still in the district.
Yeah, I think even though that one is outside of our jurisdiction, and Kelly, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we'll still keep a close eye on it, because it is just on the boundaries. Um, Daryl.
Yeah, through the chair, I'll, I'll look into it, I'll talk with the C S R D and see how quick that would be, and if it's not, then we can jump on it.
Perfect, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? Oh, sorry, Counselor Bush, I probably jumped in there.
From, oh, yeah, I just, I did file a complaint with the C S R D, but they told me it was below the high watermark, so this wasn't their, it wasn't in their jurisdiction, so I just thought that was something new, so. Yeah. Thank you.
Oh, yes, interesting.
Back to us. Back to you, Daryl. Does anyone have any other questions? So I did get some calls on the incident at Swansea Point, I've, we've got some staff that, uh, have family up there, so while the search was going on, they had, um, cousins, families, and friends, um, in, in their homes. And social media is an interesting thing, because, I mean, it went out wide in just a short period of time, and they were, there was a lot of concerns, so, um, the residents up there were quite frightened and wanted to get out. And we're not allowed to, so I just had some for you. Yeah, no, that's okay.
People were allowed to leave. They're allowed. So, and I, I spoke with the. I like I'm talking last week, and. Her goes all the, the hype about this was they have a Facebook group response. The people were fully stated, all kinds of things that were immediately relevant, but it's a pretty little bit. And there were shot fires. All kinds of things that had nothing to do with the incident, but it just kept snowballing, snowballing, and a lot of that came from this, it looks like the residents just posting off, and. That caused a lot of fear, and shouldn't have been there.
Kind of love that technology, hey? Okay, anyone else have any questions? I guess we're good. Thank you very much for your presentation. Welcome to Sicamous, and, uh. You need anything, we're here.
Much, very, counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along, um, I just want to take a moment and just, um. Our M L A Greg Kylo is online joining us today, so I just want to send out a welcome to him and thank you for joining us. I don't know if he's, um. He's off, okay, good. All right, so we're gonna move forward repairing the area regulation, Angela Cameron, Senior Aquatic Habitat Biologist, Ministry of Lands and Resources. Um, stewardship, uh, she joins us virtually, uh, welcome Angela, and, uh, just so that you are aware, our economic, not only is counsel here today, but some of our, uh, economic development. Uh, directors are here as well and may have some questions, uh, for you at the end of your presentation, so welcome and take it away.
Angela, are you online?
Might be a short presentation.
I don't see her online, maybe we can skip to the next one and try to reach out to her and see. Hey, yeah, okay, is, and who's presenting for the Sicamous Narrows Active Transportation Crossing Feasibility Study? Ian Roth, Transportation Engineer for Urban Systems, and Mike Wong, Project Manager for. Cowie North America, and you guys are, are they online?
Yes, we are, yep, can you hear me okay there?
Excellent, thank you, um, and again to you guys, we do have our E C Dev Board in the gallery, and they have a vested interest in this particular project as well, so you guys, uh. And, um, you have the floor, welcome.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, counsel. I'm just going to share my screen here with the slideshow. Okay, I trust you can all see that now?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you, and welcome, uh, thank you for the, the welcome, um, so yes, my name's Ian Roth, and I'm a transportation engineer with Urban Systems, uh, previously supported, uh, the district with the Active Transportation Network Plan. And I'm joined, uh, by my colleague here, Mike Wong from Cowie, uh, North America, um, who has provided, uh, much of the structural support, um, and development for, um, this project, so. Uh, we'll try to kind of briefly go through some of the, the high level stuff here, um, so this project, uh, funded through the National Active Transportation Program, um, is looking at the feasibility of providing an active transportation crossing. Um, connecting the main street in the downtown of Sicamous with the future rail trail, um, that will run along the west side of the Narrows. Uh, today, we wanted to, uh, present to you our initial option considerations, and, and walk you through a bit of the concept, uh, process, uh, that's, uh, been undertaken to date. Uh, as well as give you, uh, at least an initial preliminary evaluation of the concept options, and to share, you know, what type of costs and order of magnitude we're, we're talking about. Um, I think it's an opportunity that we would like to collect your input and feedback today, um, that will help shape, um, how we wrap up the feasibility study moving forward from here. So some of the initial option considerations, so when we think about active transportation and we think about bridges, um, a lot can probably come to mind, um, certainly the aesthetics of a bridge can, uh, be quite iconic when it comes to. The bridges that we see, you know, throughout Canada and certainly throughout B C, um, we can think about, you know, different types of aspects of, of the bridge and how, you know, light or bold it looks and the different types of materials. Thankfully, the good thing about active transportation bridges is for, generally, we're carrying people who are walking or cycling and not, um, so much vehicles and, and large trucks, so, um, these bridges tend to be slimmer and lighter. Um, looking in appearance, um, and they can create quite the landmark, um, and attraction for communities. And they often tend to be expressive, um, they can, can, you know, different visuals, and, um, you can use different types of nighttime illumination, so. There's a, there's a lot of things that kind of come into the details of this, but, um, you know, we won't get too far into that, we're gonna stick high level and, and talk about, you know, some of the, the feasibility considerations of how can we make this, um, happen. So there's four different types of structures that, um, typically are investigated, um, first, starting with steel or concrete, uh, girder, uh, bridge structures, these tend to be the lowest cost and most affordable type of structures. Um, typically with a span of seventy to a hundred meters, that's supported by columns, and, um, as you can see from the example here in Banff, um, different columns, um, to, to provide that, that structural support for the spans. Um, it could accommodate pedestrians and cyclists, um, it would require, uh, uh, piers within the water, which is certainly a concern when we think about the Sicamous Narrows. Uh, from an environmental and archaeological, uh, perspective, um, but it does tend to be the most economical type of bridge, um, and so it often is considered as a, at least a first, um, option. And we, uh, move on to another form of a structure, which would be a tight arch, uh, bridge, with the span is typically in the range of a hundred to two hundred meters. Uh, could require in-water piers, uh, but not always and not necessarily, it tends to have a very sleek, uh, design, and we've seen a few of these, um, across Canada. Uh, including in Brunswick here at the Fundy Discovery Site. Um, does tend to be a bit more costly in nature, um, and, but again, it's a bit balanced with the, the fact that, um, you can keep, um, some of the work outside of the, the waterway. Uh, third, are cable stayed bridges, and there's a few of these, including in Edmonton, as well as the Esplanade, Esplanade Real Pedestrian Bridge in Winnipeg. Um, these cable stayed bridges tend to be able to support longer spans, two hundred or more meters. You can keep, uh, piers with outside of the water, depending on where the main pier is situated. Does, uh, tend to provide a landmark feature, um, and the only consideration there is that the cost tends to be a bit higher. Um, and cable stayed bridges are very common throughout Canada, we see them often, as well for, for roadway bridges, um, in the B C, in the lower mainland in particular. And then, uh, last but not least, there are suspension bridges, again, the spans can be quite long, um, there's, uh, example of the Columbia River Skywalk and Trail, which, uh, the Cowie team had. Developed and prepared the design for, um, so these, again, can be, uh, kept mostly, the piers kept mostly outside of the river, um, and then, and the waterway. Um, it does tend to require more work on either side to, to suspend the structure with cables that pull back, um, on either side of the land, so that can be a big consideration there. Uh, so, you know, these are, in summary, four types of bridges that we had an initial, uh, investigation and discussion with, um, district staff. Um, Scott Beeching, um, who I, I believe is away this. Scott Beeching, who I believe is away this week, but as well as Daryl and Jeremy Schuetz. So based on, you know, a review of these four types of options and considering the constraints within the Sicamous Narrows, we did move ahead to screen out the steel or concrete girder bridge from further review. And that was mostly because it would require in-water peers. And, and we know that the waterway is quite sensitive. It would also be difficult to achieve the height clearances that we would need. As well, the archaeological significance of some of the areas underneath the water and on the, the approaches on, on the embankments was another concern that we know that there's just going to be a lack of appetite for that type of bridge structure. So that does leave these three other options that we have explored further and we'll get into a little bit more detail. So on the concept options, at a Lisa initial plan view level, just to give you a sense of where we are looking at where the structure could be. We're essentially looking at this alignment across the bottom of the screen that connects the, the main walkway from the main street landing approach at the traffic circle, pretty much following the same alignment that the, the old highway bridge used to take here across the Narrows. The span would of course cross the Narrows and it would land on the west side of the Narrows up at the elevation, for the most part, at the existing Old Spalm Jean Road alignment and level. And then from there, there would be a connection. Right now, we've shown a potential rail trail connection that would follow kind of parallel to the water and, and bring, come down to the rail trail height. This is really kind of draft and I would say the alignment of that, that, that reconnection piece could, there could be many different options, but for now, we've shown something in here to at least give us a you know, an initial sense of what could work, knowing that again, the alignment of that trail connection could vary quite a bit as further design progresses. So I'm going to finish off my one slide here. So just to give you a sense of where we're looking from visually on the left side picture here, this is our view west from the main street approach over the, to the Narrows. As we can see in the middle of the side, we've got the, the Sicamous, the district boat launch and, and mooring area for boats. That's something that would have to be considered in the design. And you can see this is in the middle photo, the rail trail alignment or the old rail trail bed. The slope at the bottom, we have the roadway Old Spalm Jean Road at the middle. And then we can see the, the size of the Knoll and the mountain and the rock cut that was created for the roadway there in the first place. And the photo to the right showing again, much of that bedrock material that exists on the west side. Our understanding is on this east side towards the main street, it's more soils and fills and less bedrock. So understanding those ground conditions is pretty key as we think about the structure types going forward. So I'm going to turn it over to Mike, who's going to walk us through the, the options that have been sketched up so far.
Thank you, Ian. This was the exciting part of the project where we get to come up with many interesting options of how to cross the Narrows. There was many consider, considerations we were looking at at this time. The major ones were the hydraulic clearance. This is a major navigation channel with a large clearance. So making sure that we stay above that to allow the boats to pass under. Utilizing the rock on the west side of, than the west bank was a consideration on many of the options, having your foundations founded on bedrock and anchored in the bedrock is a good cost effective options for one of these longer crossings. Working outside the perimeter, the wet perimeter for the, for the nails was also important key. All the options we've developed to stay outside of that. Then connection to the downtown and the child network. Looking at our property impacts and trying to stay within the city owned property as much as possible. But as you can see, a few options will be outside of that. And then also looking at construction impacts of trying to keep construction outside of downtown as much as possible and keeping on to the west side. So with those considerations, we came up with five different crossing options at this time, just at a high level, just to get an understanding of what a bridge could look like and the potential costs for it. So this is the first initial option that we came up with, which was definitely utilizing the bedrock on the west side of the Narrows. You can see this pylon base is on the switchback of the property going up to the Shu Shrop Villas. And then anchored in above into the bedrock with a thrust block located down at Old Spalm Machine Road. This is a landmark, would be a landmark structure and unique structure for the district. But it does require, would require easements and potential impacts on the adjacent properties. So this is kind of where we started. If you go to the next slide. We looked at revising it slightly. So this is a shorter tower. You can see the red line is the edge of the district's lands. So less impact. This could be refined through the different design stages to, to determine where we could anchor into that rock and place the tower. The benefit of having a single tower in this location is that most of the construction can happen on the west side of the property and avoid, avoid the work downtown. You can launch all from the west side. The other benefit of this is having, yeah, the single foundation founded on rock. So you get efficiencies with that foundation and you're not having to build a large foundation in the softer soils on the east side. So this was the one tower options. Then we also looked at two tower options. So this is a cable state bridge with two towers. This stays within the property impacts on the main street alignment. You also, all the above groundwork is on city property. It would potentially need some easements for the soil anchors that extend past the property. You can see on the west side and potentially on the east side. It'll have shorter towers than the single tower option and shorter state cables. So there's a little bit of a cost efficiency within that and constructability could be slightly easier. Most of the construction can occur above the waterway and outside the, the wedded perimeter. So that's a benefit of this option. So then we also looked at suspension bridge option, which is very similar to the cable stay option. The towers would be located at the same location with the bridge tying into Old Spalm Machine Road. Again, you'd need anchor blocks at the back with some potential soil tiebacks outside of the, of the district property. The benefit of this is you could construct this bridge using the high line, which connects across the top of the two towers. It's similar to what we did for the bridge and trail. So all the work and the construction materials can be supplied off that high line. And nothing needs to be supplied from below from the water. So you keep that waterway open throughout construction. The one thing on this option is we're approaching the length where we potentially need guide cables for wind and transverse loading to stabilize the bridge. So in that case, we would need some cables in the transverse directions that's play out. So then we'd have to look at what the property impacts would be for that. And you need an extra four anchor blocks for that option compared to the cable fridge, cable state bridge. And then the last option we looked at was an arch bridge. This will most likely be the most expensive option out of these. Build an arch bridge. You'll either, either need to have temporary towers with stays to support during the construction as you build it out, or you can prefabricate the bridge on a barge and move it over and, and lift it in. The benefits of the arch option is it utilizes the, the rock on the west side to tie in that foundation. As well as all the bridge can be built on the district owned property. So you don't have any easements required for any time back in any of the cables. So those were the five options we've taken right now and looked at. We have summarized our evaluation of these conceptual options in terms of the foundations, hydraulic clearances, the environmental impact in terms of in-water works, any connectivity differences, property impacts, constructability, operation and maintenance and costs. At this high level, you can go to the next slide. Most of the options are fairly comparable. As you can see here, option one A and B have benefits on, in terms of the foundation, because the single tower is founded on that good bedrock on the west side. Whereas the other options will have larger foundations in the softer soil. So it'll come at additional cost, most likely. Hydraulics, environmental and connectivity are all pretty similar at this high level between the options. And property impact, the best one is the arch bridge. Where the single tower cable stay, the shorter one and the suspension bridge might have some smaller impacts on property. Well, this, the single tower, larger cable stay option, yeah, showed the, the tower located off the district property. Terms of constructability, arch bridge had the most difficult can, is probably the most difficult to construct. So we're saying so a little bit of a con on that option. And then operation, maintenance between all the options should be pretty similar. They're all cable and steel structures. So overall, same cost, probably the best cost options for this kind of signature bridge would be the single tower cable stay bridge, the shorter option, or between the two tower cable stay and the suspension bridge. By this time, it's high enough level that we don't see that there's too much of a difference between those. And this is just our initial kind of look at the estimate for it. So with a four to five meter wide deck and a hundred and eighty-five meter total length of the bridge, we are coming up with a deck area of around nine hundred and twenty-five meters. Typically, what we've seen for similar types of projects is around the ten thousand, fifteen thousand dollars per square meter. Which comes up with a dollar per square meter or a total construction cost for the structure of about ten to fifteen million. Then you add in the other costs, construction costs, deciding how much you want to do in approaches in terms of connectivity. You have about a million to five million dollars. And then we're saying 10% for planning and engineering. So we're in the range of about fourteen million to twenty-two million dollar range. And we kind of put our best guess on here right now of where each of those options would kind of fall within it, but it would come down to further in design and then coming up with a bit more detailed cost estimates down the road.
Thanks, Mike. And I'll just jump in here to wrap up in terms of where we're going forward with the next steps here. So at this point, you know, we're looking to incorporate the feedback from both district staff and from council here. We had a meeting or workshop a few weeks ago with staff and they advised us to bring this information to council for additional review and input on these conceptual options. Following this, we will be refining a preferred concept with detailed or detailed rather CAD drawings and class D cost estimate, still a conceptual level, but more formalized. And then packaging that into our draft feasibility report. And that submission to come following this as well as to finalize the feasibility report. And then the kind of question comes up is where did, where did things go from here once the feasibility report is complete? Usually several steps involved in terms of, of taking a project like this from planning through to design and construction. Certainly, no, not, at least it's the funding aspect of it. But you know, the next process would be going to a preliminary design level with these options and undertaking more technical investigations, which would progress into more of a functional design or, you know, fifty percent detailed design. And then again, working towards a hundred percent detailed design that is construction ready and has gone through all the, the permitting processes and approvals. You know, down that line. So again, you know, I think at a high level, there's quite a bit of steps involved there as well as just the time it takes to develop each of these preliminary design deliverables does take a bit of time as you go from clearing rather to detailed design and tendering construction. So with that, that's kind of a summary of where we are to date and we're happy to take any further questions or comments from yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Ian. Thank you, Mike. Number, council, any questions? Everybody's kind of just sitting back, taking a big breath. Fourteen to twenty-two. Malcolm?
No. Is it, does council have to come up with one option and then they focus more on that?
Yeah, I think the next steps is, is us deciding exactly where we want to go or what we want to do. We're also going to UBCM in September looking for money. So I just want that to make that clear to the taxpayers that are all tuned in right now. I mean, there may not be no cost, but we're looking for money before we make any decisions. Cause this is, it's a huge project for Sicamous. It's an iconic project for Sicamous and it is part of a bigger picture that's going to connect us to the rail trail, which connects all the way to the US border. So this is, it's a big project for sure. And but it's an important decision that we have to make if we want to be part of the, part of the trail. Ian?
Just a question about where we are with, we had financing for the study. So I don't, if you can just go back a couple of slides or just what the next steps would be. I just want to know if that's funded in terms of what we've already had allocated to, to it. So like, where are we with that? Are we, this is the end of had funded and we have to put some more money to it right now. Just kind of whereabouts are we?
Yeah. So we're working to wrap up the funding that was provided from the grant for this feasibility study. Again, I would also say, just to go back to a comment that was shared there about in terms of selecting a preferred concept. I would say we're not at a point where we need to choose one concept or the other. I think there could be a couple of preferred concepts. But in terms of our, our budget and scope for the study, we really have the scope to look at, you know, maybe one in more detail. We could potentially look at two, just be in the less detail. We're not necessarily asking for, for you to choose which bridge you want. I think you know, there, there could be a couple of options in there. And the next step of preliminary design, which would probably be its own project in itself with a funding and a scope around that. That, that would be the, the, the time that you'd be looking at. Okay. You know, maybe we're at two or three options and let's look at them a bit further in detail. And then from that to determine the best design to move forward to a functional and detailed design level. It's a bit too early at this stage to say one option over the other is going to be best. But again, the evaluation helps point us to maybe one of, of three options rather than the five that could be explored in preliminary design. And that preliminary design would look at having a geotechnical investigation done. Environmental investigation and archaeological consultations and started to get into more of the details and depths of of how do we, how do we identify all the risks involved? And how do we, you know, start to, to get information to be able to resolve some of those things that are going to come up as the design progresses.
Go ahead, Council.
Yeah, just to follow. So I guess what I'm getting at is, do you need more money to proceed right now? Is, 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 is my direct question? Or do you still have a little bit of the budget in the pool to move this a little further along?
Uh, so no, we're essentially out of, going to be out of budget once we wrap up the feasibility report. Yeah.
Okay. So, but you are still doing the feasibility report as part of the current budget?
That's correct. Yeah. So the, it's the items below here on the, on the bottom of the screen that aren't funded, but these next steps here to final feasibility report are funded. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ian. Counselor Rich.
Hi, I didn't see in the comparison if, if one of these bridges is better or not through our winters. Because we do have a long snowy, not specifically cold, but we do have winter here. Is there, is one better off and for maintenance and that, keeping it open and all that good stuff?
I might defer to Mike on that one. Yeah. All the structures are fairly similar in concept. They all have above deck cables and steel structures, which snow could accumulate it on. But this is a similar structure that was constructed in trail BC. BC, where which they utilize in the winter and yeah, I don't think there's one that's been a better than the other at this high level stage, but they're all feasible to be used in the winter season.
Thanks, Mike. Counselor Goodfield.
Thank you, Senator Chair. Mike or Ian is, are you able to take advantage of any other art studies that are done through the channel there that are basically in the same area? Can you utilize some work that's already been done with that help helping the budget as well?
Uh, I I mean, I think the information is there and we have looked at some of it that's been shared with us by the district. But we don't have access to all the details. It's certainly helpful to know where we need to avoid and known archaeological areas. However, whenever new, any new construction occurs that might be in an area of potential archaeological significance, like on the west shore. It would still require an archaeological assessment to be completed for the specific project. And as well as investigate or monitoring during a construction process, but I think it is helpful knowing that there's information there. So it's, you know, it's not like a completely unknown black box of 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 what we're getting into, but at the same time, it would still require a documented process specifically for this project in the crossing to meet the permits that are required through the from the province and federally as well.
Thank you.
Counselor Beach, do you have something you want to add?
There you go.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I I that was going to be my question was the archaeological piece of it. Uh, that would significantly add, right? That would be on top of any cost that you you've given us. So that's a huge consideration. Yeah. I don't know how much we we have on that for that area, but that would be big. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone from McDev? Do you have any questions? Go ahead, Mike.
Um, is it the design of this? Was it taking into account the handle of urgency vehicles crossing like ambulance fire trucks if I was ever be close?
At this point, no, it's something that could be, you know, incorporated into a preliminary design stage if that was a a need or consideration. Typically, these bridges, in addition to pedestrians and bikes, will support maintenance and service vehicles. But if that was to be like a fire truck or something of that scale and size, it would it would need to be a big part of the design criteria. It would probably increase the the structural loading requirements for a structure of this size. So at this point, it hasn't, but it's not ruled out.
So, Mike, what do you think the cost increase would be to add emergency vehicles? Like just a rough guess, I mean, just so that we have the information so we can have a discussion.
Yeah, uh, it's hard to put a number at it without really looking at the the detailed numbers. Nedham's here who's uh also with us. Maybe he can provide a bit of a input on that.
Hi, hi, this is Nedham Alto with Kovey and I was the uh, I'm one of the VPs at Kovey and I was in charge of the Columbia River Skywalk project in Trail and 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 we went through the same discussion there. What does it take to put an emergency vehicle and you know, what we ended up there is that we eliminated and then only use maybe uh like ATV type of a vehicle. And then pulling maybe a dolly or of some sort. And because once you actually start putting an emergency vehicle like a an ambulance or or fire truck, those are very significant loads. And then I would say it will probably increase the cost by quite a bit. And then I would say in the order of another, you know, twenty-five to fifty percent more. So now, you know, you have to you know, comply to a bunch of roadway type of structure requirements. And then a- and and then we find that it's a lot of times it's not really needed, you know, just to get across and you know, sometimes maybe for example, a pickup truck is quite different from uh, an ambulance weight wise.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Another thing that I mentioned actually to to Mike is if you wish, we can organize a a site visit to Trail and then also hook you up with the city of Trail Mayor who was in, you know, spearheading at the time of the whole funding and and design and construction of the bridge and then how they went about it. So if there's a desire from the city council on a on a trip to Trail and and, you know, meet the folk actually who actually worked on this job and how they went about it would be, you know, pleased to help you with that if you like.
Okay, thank you. We will take that into consideration, Counselor Bailey.
Yeah, so just gonna maybe just throw a scenario at you. Let's say we had all the money with twenty million bucks right now, which is we don't. How long would this kind of take? Let's just say the financial equation is out. We're ready to start kind of going. What what would be a realistic timeline in years, obviously, for a project of this scale?
That's a good question. So I would say preliminary and functional design could take in the range of two years, maybe a little longer. Once you get into detailed, you know, two, three years for preliminary functional design, detailed design, at least another year or so, and I think maybe Mike or the team could be more accurate and on the detailed parts of it, but you know, it this is a process that's probably about four to six years of of getting to a construction ready design. Just depending on often some of that's out of our control when it comes to permitting processes to get everything lined up for construction. And then the construction process is usually within a season. I can leave it maybe to Mike and to to comment further, but we're we're it's not something that could be done within maybe a couple of years. Generally, it's a it's a bit more of a modest. It's a larger scale capital improvement for sure. Not to the extent of something like the Site C construction project up north, but something that does take a bit of time and effort.
Thanks, Ian. That's all we needed was or was a high level, a high level. How long before you think the report could be finished?
I would say following any final feedback or input here, we could have the report and design finished within about three to four weeks.
I think that we should focus on that because we need to take this to UBCM. So that's going to be imperative to have. CEO Bennett? Yes, hello, thank you. Um, so I'm just wondering, in order to move this forward, did you want comments from council in terms of preferred concepts? Now, or should we gather that information and send it to you so we can make sure this continues to move?
Uh, I think the later would be good if you can gather some information and and comments to confirm with the district staff and then we can work with that following this. So don't want to put you too much on the spot today.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. Daryl, do you have anything you want to add?
It's a big price tag, but you know, I I guess going through this process and hearing the pluses and the minuses with all of them. The the thing that makes me most fearful is stuff that's out of our control. So the environmental stuff, the art stuff. Things that can kind of fly into the middle of the project with everything way up. So I'm a big fan of of the art. And build it. I know constructability is difficult. They've got two stars saying it's hard to build, but they also have two stars saying it's expensive. It's not our problem to build it. We're paying for it and it's too bad. It's hard to build. That would be the one where we're on our property and, you know, it's a little more money, but to keep it streamlined, keep it moving. So, I mean.
Sure, taking into consideration too that there's already been a bridge cross, so it's landing in the same spot. Right? So there shouldn't be too much archaeology or environmental impact landing in the same space it was land it has been in.
Unless we're putting somebody like in the water because there's a weird there. There's there's things there, so.
Yeah, yeah, okay, understand. Okay, any other questions? Counselor McCabe?
Yeah, I like the arch, arch option.
Yeah, the most expensive one. I think we all do. That's how we roll. This is how we roll, right? Anyway.
Least amount of impact to the environment.
Yeah, good point. Yeah. The other things could cost and take more time.
My understanding of the arch and correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding was they they actually build that one in the water. Is that right?
You can do it in two ways. You can either stick build it with the temporary towers and stays. Uh, and you come out from each of the the banks and meet in the middle, or you can pre-build it on a barge outside and then you 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 barge it over and then lift it into the place from the banks. So.
Probably sell tickets.
Fundraiser. Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate all the information and we council will take it all in and we'll gather some information and get back to you.
Um, may I just chime in with the environmental for a sec? In Trail, the environmental piece was actually handled pretty quickly because of the bridges staying out of the water. Really solved the issue quite well. I think within a very short time, we we were able to get permits related to the environmental. And then the big thing is to go to them with a a plan that, you know, considers construction. And and also follow through with the 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 final design that's very similar to what we told them at the beginning. And then I think my timeline is less pessimistic than Ian's. And then I think in Trail, we were able to do, you know, from concept to design and construction. Obviously, within about three years, including the permitting. And then, so you know, if you wanted to accelerate it, there's definitely ways to do that and we we can help you with the with a lot of these issues by, you know, planning it all the way through.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Thank you for being here today.
Bye bye. Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to move on. Do we have Angela online yet? Okay, so we're moving to repairing area regulation. Angela Cameron, Senior Aquatic Habitat Biologist. Ministry of Kent Water, Land and Resources stewardship. Welcome, Angela. We have the council here as well as we do have our Economic Development Board members that will probably have some questions as well. So we're going to open the floor up to you, Angela. Welcome.
Thank you for having me. Can everybody see the presentation?
Yes, we can see it, but your mic seems a little sketchy there.
Okay, that's a little odd.
That's better.
That's better.
Okay, good. Yeah, sometimes. All right. Well, thank you for having me. And I'm just going to move this around. Okay, great. Yes, so I just wanted to, oh my goodness, go to the beginning. Because that would be a good place to start. So I'm Angela Cameron. I'm in RP Bio with the Ministry of Water, Land and their stewardship. And I just wanted to thank the meeting of the whole today for having me. And I'm presenting to you from the traditional and unceded territory of the Snoane, Snoanamo First Nation, where I'm so grateful to live and work. And today I'm going to just spend a few minutes discussing the riparian areas protection regulation, what it is, why it was implemented. How it can benefit local governments and also to discuss the provinces, local governments and landowner roles with regard to the wrapper process. So I'll just call it wrapper from now on because it's amiable. Um, I'm going to be kind of going through this presentation hopefully fairly swiftly, so we can have lots of time for questions at the end, but if there's anything pressing, please feel free to interrupt me. So what is the wrapper and what is the process? How does it kind of interact with other provincial regulatory guidelines and requirements? The wrapper was first created to protect fish and fish habitat and it was created in support with DFO, like so Fisheries and Oceans Canada. Basically to ensure that all commercial, industrial and residential development is in compliance with the Federal Fisheries Act. So wrapper is administered through the local government through your development permit process. So you will have a sensitive ecosystems development permit area. And it's an authority that is granted to local governments through the Local Government Act. And aside from ensuring regulatory compliance with the Federal Fisheries Act and and provincial measures to protect fish habitat and water quality for the public's interest, the wrapper also provides several potential benefits to local governments. Such as planning, engineering department requirements as it sets minimum setbacks to other to stream systems that may otherwise cause things like erosion issues, floodplain issues and stormwater management issues. So how does this, how does it even come into play? So because wrapper applies to industrial, commercial and residential developments. Rapper is administered through the local government permitting process and it's triggered for anything that is development as defined by the regulation. So generally speaking, within thirty meters of a stream such as a lake, a ditch, a stream channel or wetland. If somebody wants to complete anything that falls within the wrapper definition of development, it would trigger this process with the local government. So here I put the development definition down for you to take a look at. And as you can see, the definition under the regulation is very broad and it encompasses more than what would be triggered just for building permit. And for this reason, it's very critical that the province and local governments have a really great and open communication. So that we can support your staff in administering the regulation as intended. And when your development current area for streams is triggered, your planning department will then require that landowner to hire a qualified environmental professional or a QBP as we call them. They're usually environmental consultants and they have appropriate education, expertise, expertise and they're they have a professional association that governs them. So for example, an RP Bio such as myself is governed by the College of Applied Biologists of BC. Uh, and they, these QBPs assess the streams, which again could be ditches all the way up to lakes. And they use our wrapper methodology to assign a setback. So the the thirty meter trigger is just a buffer to trigger the need for the assessment. But the actual setback itself can be anywhere between two meters all the way up to thirty meters from the stream boundary. So this report that the QBP creates is then submitted to the province for review. So that our biologist can review it and confirm if it conforms with our minimum requirements or not. Reports are always now reviewed within thirty business days of submission, but right now we're actually reviewing them within ten days of submission. And once a report has been deemed to be accepted or it meets the the standards of the wrapper, an email will be generated to the planning department that indicates that the the DP can can move forward under the current plan that the QBP has submitted. And this will signal to district staff that the permit can be issued so long as the plans are what was agreed upon. And so I was asked to kind of prepare an example and I apologize for my very poor drawing skills. I was not an artist, so. For example, here is a screenshot of a couple of streams in the District of Sicamous and I I kind of roughly measured out a thirty meter buffer, which is delineated by this really bright red line here. And that means that anything that's shaded in purple would be subject to the wrapper if development was proposed. would be subject to the wrapper if development was proposed within that area. And that would be the trigger for the regulation. And basically, that would start the process. However, if the development proposed was to like re-roof an existing house or something like that, that would be an exemption under wrapper because if a house or an existing structure that was there previous to the regulation being created, so pre two thousand six, any existing structure or land use can be continued so long as it's not changing. So they are allowed to maintain their houses, they're allowed to maintain their decks, their docks, their lawns. There are any retaining walls, they can maintain those. But as soon as somebody would like to, you know, build a a boathouse or a guesthouse, or maybe they want to tear down a house and rebuild, that would trigger the need for an assessment. And this is just a bit of a summary of what I just said, which is basically that anything that is legal non-conforming, so that would be anything that exists previous to the regulation coming into effect. So pre two thousand six, would you can complete maintenance works on those properties without triggering the wrapper. But as soon as anything's new or the structure changes, then that's when the wrapper would be triggered. And that's because the wrapper is actually what we call a net game regulation. So it recognizes that in the past developments didn't really take into consideration fish habitat. So we're just looking to not do kind of business as usual, but rather built back better, I guess you could say. For local governments, this process, as I mentioned before, can be very beneficial as it reduces the liability of homes and other constructed features being built within floodplains or too close to ravine banks. And it ensures that all new developments are taking into consideration critical fish habitat while also protecting for extreme flood and drought events, which are unfortunately becoming more and more frequent as climate change progresses. And just a couple of additional notes about the wrapper process here, that if a lot, if a QEP goes to a lot and they assign a setback that is is very large and it basically sterilizes the lot. We have an undue hardship process that would allow the landowner to develop either thirty or forty percent of the lot, whatever the zoning allows for, based on if it's a greenfield site or if it's a brownfield or already developed site. So we do have contingencies for allowing people to to use the property as it's intended under current zoning through the undue hardship process. Also, the QEPs, I know that staff had asked me to just explain that they do take the a wrapper course to understand how to complete these assessments. And because they're part of a professional association, there is a responsibility and a care for detail with QEPs when they're being hired by landowners to basically support the landowners in in their development while also adhering to the regulation. And and basically, anytime that local government planners have any questions about the wrapper, our team has finally staffed up. So we have we have eight members instead of just two now. So we have much more capacity to have these types of conversations, which we're very excited about. And we're hoping that in the coming months, we'll actually be doing more outreach, maybe even in person. So. Yeah. And I know that there might be questions that we don't get to today or maybe come up like in your head a few hours from now. And I just wanted to leave you with Arianna McCabe's email because she's the Riparian Management Coordinator for the Rapper Team. My role with the Rapper Team will be ending at the, in the beginning of August. Arianna is fantastic and she'll be here to answer all your questions.
Thank you, Angela. Okay, council, any questions? Counselor Bushell, Counselor McCabe.
Thank you, Angela, for the for the presentation. You were saying that your QEP QEP report turnaround is thirty days or sometimes as many as as little as ten days?
That's right, yeah.
We're 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 here and it's eight months and that's that's there's a big backlog. Can you?
Yeah, that's that doesn't exist anymore. Yeah. Yeah, it wasn't up to eight months back in February. But then, my I was, my role with the team was, I was tasked with basically getting rid of the backlog. So we updated our process and I hired six additional biologists to do the reviews and we trained them all up. And now our backlog is basically ten days right now.
Interesting. Thank you.
That's that's awesome. Thank you, Angela, because we've been backlogged here for a long time. So we just assumed that the 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 problem was still was still there. Yeah. Counselor McCabe?
Yeah, I think Langford has some sort of system where they don't have to refer to the provincial government and they are their own approving authority. Is that correct? And wouldn't that be simpler than adding more staff to yours, your staff? Just giving local government the authority, avoid that referral process altogether?
Yeah, that's a great question. So I can answer it. That's kind of a two parter. Langford actually doesn't have the authority not to submit reports to the wrapper. So we are actually working with them to try and solve that that issue with their process because it has resulted in litigation several times. So we are working with them to try and assist them in in understanding the benefits of having of following the regulation as it's written. However, that being said, there are local governments who do not submit or do not require submission to the wrapper RARNESS system, such as the City of Abbotsford, the City of Surrey, as well as the City of Richmond. And there's a couple others, but basically how they do that is and something that we're very, very much in supportive because I agree it's better to have that process dealt with entirely through the local government if possible. How they do that is they have a quote unquote, a meet or beat or meet or exceed portion of their their bylaw. So there's zoning bylaw guidelines for their, there's another ecosystem. It basically exceeds wrapper setbacks in basically every single case. And so we would review any local government that came up with with guidelines like that. So for example, the City of Abbotsford has a blanket thirty meter setback. That's it's quite large. It's perhaps the largest one that exists, but they don't have any variances usually with their setbacks. But if they do, then we would see a wrapper assessment submitted to us so that council would have the guarantee that they're not going below wrapper by accident. But in those cases, almost every single DP application in those local governments is completely dealt with internally through staff, just because their setbacks exceed the minimum setbacks of wrapper.
Thank you, Counsel Bailey.
Yeah, so you pointed out that the regulation was here to protect fish habitat. There's some climate change goals in there as well. Has it ever been reviewed or has anything ever been benchmarked at how you're achieving those goals, the program?
Yeah, that's a great question. We are actually able to do some effectiveness monitoring this year. So we finally had the resources and the funding to to do some effectiveness monitoring on so RAR and wrapper files. So basically from two thousand six until last year, looking at how the protection, streamside protection areas are actually working on the ground, if they're actually doing what they're supposed to be doing. We have had literature reviews, look at the most recent science to determine if our setbacks are too great in some cases or too small in others. So we're actually collecting that information and reviewing it this month and just going to be making some updates to our regulation within the coming year. So which is pretty fast for provincial government. So yeah, that's a great question. And and that's stuff that we actually were able to do because of support of local government efforts. So.
Thank you. ECT, do you guys have any questions that you want to? No, you're good. Counsel, Counsel Bushell?
Yes, thanks. To the chair. Yeah, Angela, is the, I just, you talk about the wrapper course. Is that, anybody can take that, like, could a district employee take that in the planning department and we eliminate the provincial government? You know, because we were having such a big backlog?
Yeah, so again, with with the backlog, again, we don't the backlog on our side is gone. But we would say that the the local governments that do not submit to wrapper, part of their process tends to be that they have hired a QEP to work in the planning department. So essentially, they'll hire their own biologist to work as an environmental planner for the local government, reviewing applications to take that load off of the planners themselves and provide good information at pre-application meetings and things like that. So we do find that that has been really been, I mean, the feedback I've gotten from local governments who have an individual like that has been very positive. But again, it really has to do with the process that would allow you to kind of forego submitting to the to RARNESS and waiting for feedback. But if there are any any desires to change the process, we're here to review it and provide feedback and help. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mike.
Sorry, I just have one question. I guess on the maintenance aspect of it, like if you're in a channel, there are a lot of high water flow. A lot of silt is moved and fills up in some areas. Would make it, could we maintain it by like clearing out some of the silt that's been put there? Would that be in the maintenance aspect?
Yes, that's another good question. And kind of, I wasn't able to squeeze in the relationship between wrapper and the Water Sustainability Act. But those are two regulations that, you know, they seem like they're very similar, but they're actually very, very different. And the WSA would would be the regulatory body that or the regulatory mechanism that you would use to do that type of in-stream maintenance. So for any maintenance of a channel and things like that, you would normally do that under like a WSA notification if it's just your normal stormwater works. Or like a blanket, Section eleven for your whole district kind of thing through the Ministry of Forests.
And what if it's like an individual that they're forced to, like for businesses on the channel or?
Yeah, again, they would, any in-stream works must be looked at or receive authorization through the Water Sustainability Act. And then basically, from the high water mark or the stream boundary, a plant, that's all within the wrapper jurisdiction. So if you're just looking at the actual in-stream maintenance, then that would be Water Sustainability Act.
Thank you.
Yeah, no worries.
Anyone else? Counsel, go ahead. See you in a minute.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask a question. Can you go back to the the picture of the lagoon that or that the drawing that you did? And I popped out for a minute and I don't know if you touched on this. So the red area is the thirty meter mark. And then there's an area which is the spia, which is the no no build zone, and it's it's normally around fifteen meters. I know it changes here and there. And you talked about grandparenting. In your professional opinion, within that fifteen meters, is there ever an opportunity to do anything in there moving forward with these new regulations? Or is that just never again? Will it be touched? Because I know there's a lot of people who have properties in that area within the fifty meter mark right now. So just some clarity on that.
Yeah, yeah. So the the red mark is a thirty meter, like super approximate measurement that I did on. So the red line is sort of, if we say that's thirty meters from the from the boundary of the lake and the river, then the anything that's proposed within the purple dash areas would trigger the need for a wrapper assessment. And and yes, it 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 would vary, like there would be different types of setbacks. But whatever the setback is determined to be, so the streamside protection and enhancement area is the spia. And there is no work that can be done within the spia other than restoration. So so yeah, that's, you're you're absolutely right that the intent is that nothing further gets done except for restoration or naturalization of the setback area. But then there are those situations that I mentioned where we don't want to be, we can't legally sterilize a property from its intended use. So if that setback makes it impossible for somebody to, like, if they want to demolish a house and rebuild, then they would, and their their setback is like sixty percent of their property or or seventy percent of their property. Then we would allow them to apply for an undue hardship and they would be able to work with their QEP to determine a footprint within the spia that would be minimal. But then maybe there's some reclamation that happens as well. So it's sort of like a win-win situation.
Perfect. So Angela, I just have a quick question since this slide came back and it just crossed my mind. So that's a lagoon and fish habitat is very, very low, according to last QEP that was doing some work in there. So is, does that make a difference as well? Because it is basically a man-made dredged lagoon and fish habitat, which, I mean, that's that's the, you know, the the trigger here. So is there a difference between places like that and just regular non-man-made, just like short?
Wow, these are such great questions. I'm so happy. So with the wrapper and with the Fisheries Act, actually, fish habitat has become very broad. So it's not just where fish live or fish rear or spawn. It's more if there's connection with the water, then there can be like, for example, if if there's an oil spill in this lagoon, will it also make its way into the lake? I mean, there's a potential for that to happen. And so just the same way that that could happen, there could be litter fall and insects falling from the trees here that would benefit fish habitat as well. So anything connected, that's why even ditches are are protected under wrapper. It doesn't matter if there's, if fish, you know, carry out their full life processes in an area, it's more the connection of flowing or of water at all. And then the connection where there's a potential that fish could access the area. So even confirmed non-fish bearing like ditches, for example, they have a reduced setback, but they still are protected under the wrapper.
Okay, thank you. And just a second part of my question is, the ECT board is here today because we are, as was just mentioned, looking at perhaps dredging the channel. The fish habitat in the channel is dying because the water is so low in there and so warm, the fish can't move freely. The fish can't move freely anymore. So is there some rules or regulations where you get to do something that enhances or creates a better environment for fish habitat?
Yeah, like I said, the Water Sustainability Act, which I think that an application had been made to dredge this feature a couple of years ago, maybe. And that is absolutely a hundred percent the correct pathway to go if you want to be dredging or doing compensation works or, or, you know, just restoration works of any kind. The WSA allows for those things and are pretty happy to see those types of projects coming. The Rapper, again, it kind of, the jurisdiction of the Rapper begins where the, where the stream ends. So it's sort of at the very boundary. So if there was like a retaining wall here, for example, like in other imagery, I could see that this area is a beach and that there appears to be kind of like a retaining wall around here. And in some years I can see the water comes all the way up to the retaining wall. So I'd say that's probably the stream boundary. So any works from then and then upland would be Rapper. And any works within the actual lagoon and within that beach area would be WSA.
Go ahead, Counsel Bailey.
Yeah, so just a very simple question so everybody can fully understand this. Everything that is on the map that we're currently looking at, let's just say it's not there. It could not be built today, correct?
It could, like, what it was said earlier was, oh, well, what if there was a fifteen meter setback? For example, so the setbacks are kind of, they're prescribed through the technical manual. So if there was a fifteen meter setback to this lagoon, which would make sense.
Well, let's just say thirty, let's just say thirty for, for.
Yeah, if there was a thirty meter setback, then, then the red line would be where there couldn't be development. Yes. But currently the red line just shows where there would be a trigger for an assessment.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think it's important that people just know the implications of what we're talking about here and, and the policy change, that a lot of the places that are in Sycamore would not be permitted to be built today under these current regulations. And I think that's, that's where there is a concern level around this. And that's why I asked you about, I'm certainly very interested to see what your report says on, on the efficacy of, of the, you know, the law. I'm glad that you guys took a look at that. So I certainly hope that's available to the public and, you know, municipalities.
Angela, you also mentioned though that land cannot be sterilized, like, I mean, there has to be. A portion of it that people can build on. I mean, you can't own property on the channel and not be able to build on it, right?
Yeah, in, in these situations, we, so undue hardship was created because of what we call legacy lots. And in this situation, it's a perfect example of legacy lots that would not have been created into these legislation, under today's legislation, but were created pre-two thousand four, which is, so I should explain the RAR, which existed before the Rapper, came into effect, fully effect in two thousand four. But it wasn't actually required that local governments start implementing it until two thousand six. So two thousand six tends to be our more lenient date where I say, was it built before two thousand six? Okay, it's, or was it subdivided before two thousand six? Sure, like, let's just move forward with this. It's legal non-conforming and a lot of these lots, especially in the Okanagan, but also in places like Harrison Hot Springs, they have lots of these tiny little lots that exist right next to places with big, big setbacks. And the whole, the whole lot can be sterilized. And so that's why the undue hardship was created, was basically to, to, as an understanding that we can't undo what was done before. We're going to work with local governments to make sure that, that landowners can still use their lots and build on them. And like I said, if, if it's currently long, they can maintain it as long. It's only just, you know, if they let it kind of start going a little wild and, and naturalized, then it becomes an issue with like removing trees and shrubs and things like that. But yeah.
Hey, Counsel, anything else? Angela, thank you very much for your presentation today. That was helpful.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Yeah, okay, thank you very much. Okay, moving on. Where are we now? Development Services update. Sarah, you have the podium, please.
Thank you, Sarah. Just waiting for our visuals to come up on screen here. So our just one page in the long form, we will be here regarding building facilities. So this will be for our second quarter, I believe. This is April to June. Comment, issues, questions or comments on this one?
Counsel, any questions?
Sue. Yeah, I just wanted to point out that year to, this should say twenty twenty-three on it, not twenty twenty-two, but we have ten million dollars in building permits, of which, you know, eight million of that was in the month of May and June. So May and June were a pretty heavy building permit month. Previously, I think we had about one million. So in these three months, we, we've got nine point one million in building permits. So that's a significant increase in our, our building permits previously. So we got, there's lots of things happening.
Yeah, that's awesome. It's nice to see. Counsel, any comments? Carry on, Sarah.
Great, so our next slide, our development applications. These are also quarterly, so this is people through June. We've also got some year-to-date data on there. Any questions or comments there?
Counsel? No, go ahead.
And finally, our last update for bylaw enforcement. So we've got some information here on files, they have the open, closed complaints that didn't require files to be open. And then there's also information on here about tickets. So you can kind of see what types of tickets are being issued and kind of what their dollar value is as well as comparison to last year.
Counsel, any questions? Everyone's good. John's obviously doing a good job. Okay, that's good. Thanks, Sarah. Hey, go ahead. UBCM Next Generation nine eleven funding program for information to Counsel.
Thank you, Sarah. So we wanted to bring this fund to Counsel just to give you an introduction to what it is and what it's about ahead of time. So this is the background of what is NG nine one one. It is a term I've been throwing around last year a little bit and do a little bit of work around it. So NG nine one one, it stands for Next Generation NG nine one one. What it is, is modernization of our nine one one networks, infrastructure all across Canada. It's a federal mandate that this is done. And the idea is to support improvements to public speed. So what this means for local governments, local governments are responsible for providing GIS data that will be used as part of the residency response.
GIS. What's GIS?
Well, GIS, it stands for Geographic Information Systems, which is basically mapping. So you know our public inquiry map? That is developed in a GIS environment. So in order to provide this data for this program, there is a very specific format that the data has to be provided in. And a lot of local governments, there isn't necessarily a standard about how that data is formed or what information is attached to that data. So you have to provide a specific format, have specific information attached to it. So what we need to be providing is road central line, site structure, address points or addressing, and street gate alias, so we're about to go with this. So the program itself is through UDCM and is supposed to support local governments in transitioning to this new system. A base funding amount of forty-five thousand dollars being given to every local government. And eligible to these for the use of those funds include education, legal and contract costs for migration to this new system, as well as mapping in GIS and training for local fire departments. So where are we right now? We've already been hearing about this a staff for a while and we've been integrating this into a lot of our projects to make sure that, you know, we're ready for this when it comes. So right now, we've already updated our mapping system. So I think we're all aware of that, with a better public facing map to provide information to the public. It was also updated to help support public works in maintenance of infrastructure, as well as inventories, asset management. So we also had to rebuild our address data set. So the way that digital information was being stored was not in a format that functioned very well, especially in terms of public works and open the field. We actually have a total field where they can access all this supervision and mapping. And that was important for them. So we did rebuild that and that was done through departmental budgets. But we were mindful that we would need to remind them in a specific format for this upcoming change. So that was built with that in mind. We also updated our civic addresses and street name by law, which was a complete update. I mean, remember, they're pretty old money figures that didn't have a lot of information on there. So those updates put in place best practices in terms of how we go about addressing new properties or renaming streets that it would support in reducing services rate lines. So it was consistent. So in terms of how Sycamore should use the funds, we could, we could use it to recoup the cost of updating our address data, getting our road central lines. We do not currently have road central line data. We do have alias, roaming alias data. But there have been noted over like, you know, since I've been here, there are some inconsistencies there. So we do need to double check and make sure that they're accurate. And it's part of our responsibility. And then also using those funds to support helping that data sharing with an aggregator. So in the SAC report, I did talk about working with the International Cadastral Society, ACIS. I'm trying to remember what that stands for. They, they sort of fill a gap in the C in terms of data and GIS data. And what they do for us currently is they actually ensure that road names and addressing information gets fed to GOC to keep their civic address, like address PC later up to date, as well as the road atlas. It sounds like though that they're not going to necessarily be able to step into this role for NG nine one one. So the CSRD is looking at stepping in to fill that gap, which is not unusual. It would be pretty normal that a regional government would do that. So we'll see how that all works out. And yeah, we bring more information forward at that time, you know, once we kind of figure out where we're going. So basically, we could be hiring consultants ourselves to do road central line data, or we might be cooperating with the CSRD at the City of San Onofre, et cetera, on a joint RFP to have a contractor do it for the whole region. But like I said, we'll learn more as this.
Hey, thank you. Counsel, any questions? Counsel, Bush.
To the Chair, Sarah, I guess as we migrate towards NG nine one one, is the forty-five thousand dollars going to be enough to do everything we need to do?
It's a good question. I think doing the address layer, I think it was around three thousand dollars to do that. So I think it would, you know, especially, you know, we need to include and train the fire department staff that might need to be done. It really depends on whether the proper equipment in their vehicles has to be updated. And I did reach out to the CSRD to find out about that. And that's not, equipment itself's not a related, related to the funds. And it didn't sound like that equipment would need to be changed. It's just where that, what, what that, what data that equipment is running off of. So still not a hundred percent sure yet. This has been really a slowly evolving topic.
The central line data stuff sounds a little expensive to figure out all that.
I did ask for a quote, I don't quite have it yet, but it sounded, it didn't sound like it was. Yeah.
Thank you.
So just for clarification, this is a federal program. It's driven by nine one one emergency response. So we're digging deeper into the weeds of streets and lines and roads and where everyone is living. And that is basically the information that they're collecting, nothing else, like, it's just, and will the equipment, back to Gord's, will the equipment, or your comment, if that's the case, all equipment and vehicles will need to be updated, right?
Didn't sound like it would need to be rebuilt. I did reach out to the CSRD to find out. It didn't sound like the equipment itself would need to change. That would be okay. So it really has to do with the information that's attached to that data. So for example, the road central line, we'll get more, more, like, we'll get into the weeds a little bit about what that is. They want to know exactly where all the cross streets are, for example. Exactly how many address points are on that street and which addresses are on the street. So there's like some crossing of information and adding it together. So they want to know, is this the north section, the south section? How far is it from the next intersection? It gets a little bit detailed and it's more than what we certainly need to do our business, but for nine one one responders, to help them accurately locate where someone is, to be self.
Okay, anyone have any other questions? Thank you, Sarah. We're good. Okay, operations and infrastructure. The pump track is going to be moved to Daryl and we have a Sycamoreson District Recreation Center update, which I'm going to do the update on that. I spoke to John on Monday and we have a meeting set up with, being set up right now with CEO Bennett, Director Martin, CAO McLean and myself. I spoke to him about the issues and challenges that we are having with the Rec Center and the booking times. And it's not as cut and dry and simple. It's a matter of union people. It's a matter of people that being there that have the skillset to be there to make sure they can open and close. There's a lot of, a lot of things that we need to go over. So we will be discussing, I will be reaching out to the user groups, which have already started to, just to get the information that I need, Kelly and I go into this meeting. And it's almost, it, it's, as well, it's financial, you know? I mean, the recreation needs to make some money to support it as well. So there are many things involved in this. It's not as cut and dry and simple as when we used to run it and whoever wanted it could use it. We don't run it anymore. So we are going to work out a schedule that works for everyone. So until we have that meeting, there's really not much more I can add to that. But we are.
Discussing this now?
We, I don't have any information. So if you'd like to go ahead, Counsel Bailey, go ahead.
No, I just want to know where we are with the agenda. Are we on?
Oh, no, that's, it's next on the agenda right here, operations and infrastructure.
No, but we have under E, Sycamoreson District Recreation Center.
Am I just, did I skip ahead of you?
Yeah. I, I was just wondering.
That's your, okay, well, I'm done. Go ahead, Daryl.
Work where I can wait, does matter.
Actually, you know what? You and I can switch spots. So that's the update on the Rec Center. And so we, sorry about that, Daryl, it'd be a step on your toes. That's until we get sit down with the, the user groups. We don't have much more information.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Well, I, I mean, there's obviously been some concern about this in the community. I'm glad that John has been able to get back and, and touch base. I mean, I, I think this is something that Counsel, previous Counsel has even discussed. I think it's something that we should be discussing as a Counsel on a larger level. What makes sense for our community? This is not something that I know people were concerned that we're beating up on the. This is not something that I know people were concerned that were beating up on the C S R D. And I, I would. Say, no, that's the, it's the opposite of it. It's actually. How does this arena and how does the function of this arena work for everybody here? And obviously there's some financial implications. We pay about what three hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year towards the operation of the arena. So we need to make sure that money is being uh, properly utilized, properly, uh. You know, manage in terms of the benefit that is coming to our community as well, because that is Sycamore's District of Sycamore's taxpayers' money. And I think the. The discussion I wanted to have was, is this working for us? And that's why I, I put it here. I think it's kind of timely. That we have a whole bunch of issues that have been identified by the user groups. There's certainly frustration in the community. And, and I thought it was just an appropriate thing to have on the committee of the whole, given this background. I'm glad that the meeting is going forward. I really am. But I don't think it should necessarily preclude. Discussions of other options and things that we might want to, to consider. Um, and I think it's, we're at that stage probably where a good, healthy discussion in the public. And getting publicly put on what this arena's goal is and how we want to interact with our community. And our hockey users and, and other groups. And we have some plans too, in terms of our strategic priority that we'd like to see. We've talked about as a council. How that all kind of fits together. So. That's why it's here. And I, I mean, maybe I'm the only one that wants to say anything about it, but that's. That was kind of my idea behind it and, and why I asked for it to be put on the agenda. It's not a bash the C S R D session. It's far from it. It's about how to, um. How to make this work for everybody.
Nice. And, and yes, that's, that definitely is our goal, but we don't manage it. So we're going to sit down and figure out how this does work best for this. District of Sycamore's. It's, we don't own it. We don't manage it. It is part of Sycamore's. So we are going to sit down and see if we can get our fair shake there. Because things have changed. It used to be run by the district and they used to have a board, but then it was handed off. To another company to run it. And then they failed. So then it was handed to the C S R D who had managers in place. So the C S R D is managing it. So that's the, the whole point of this meeting is to figure out how we all work together. A little bit better because we all know that it's been a little contentious at times. So. That's what this meeting is all about. For it, Council Bushel.
Yeah, I just, you know, uh, we'll go back. We'd never run it. The District of Ziggles has never run it. It was developed in nineteen eighty one. And society was set up and they ran for, um, forty two years. Whatever, maybe forty, forty some, forty years. And we're in year forty two now. And we've had the same service agreement with the C S R D for forty two years. And that agreement was put in place to, to, to actually, uh, build, operate. And run the rec center. So. The, the building is done. Right? The debt is gone. And we still don't have a new, uh, you know, service establishing agreement. So we really need to focus on it. We've got nine or ten other service agreements with the C S R D. They look after mosquitoes. They used to look after our C S R D or economic development. But we thought we could do a little better and we did do a little better, I think. But going back to the rec center, when our hockey team in town can't book a rec, a game. And now they're playing in Vernon. And they tried to book in January and they never got a response till May. And I know they've gone through their, their hoops with management, you know, um. It's just time to look at the service agreement. And I think myself. It takes a year or so to actually even get somebody to negotiate a service agreement. We need to. Put them on notice that we want to review the service agreement. And, and review the whole management of the rec center. Because it's not working. Evan and I went, met on February seventeenth, twenty twenty one. Kelly and Evan did a delegation in December twenty, sorry, Jen, June sixteenth, twenty twenty two. Uh, the Stadia took over in June eleventh, twenty one. You know, they, they terminated them on the twenty second. And it's, it's still not, it's not serving our community. And I always say is, if we're paying three hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year. Why are we paying three hundred and eighty seven dollars a year? Like, why don't we just, if all the user groups just want to book the ring, call the C S R D and book it. Like, why are we paying for it? The debt's paid off. All that's been done. So we just, we really got to sit down with the C S R D and say, how do we make this work? And, and, and I think there's some frustrated user groups in the community. After talking to some minor hockey and, 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 you know, people just using the gym for that matter. You know, so that's what I, that's all I like to say.
Yep. And I don't think anyone disagrees. Go ahead, Counsel Rich.
Um, through the chair. Yeah, I think the big thing here is. And I know they need to make money, um, and to keep it running. Um, but then. How does that work for our community? Because the, I mean, it, it's, it's not a non. Per profit, but the rec center is here to service Sycamore's. Um, and should be, yes, C S R D, yada, yada, yada. But our area. Family should be, Sycamore should be, our kids should be the ones and seniors and. If someone wants to go into that arena for. To, to use the cafeteria or whatever, those, our, our community should be getting first dibs. And if that's, if, if they say the three hundred and eighty five thousand dollars that we're paying is not giving us that, then. What do we need to do that? Because it, I mean, I'm involved. Just because of my, where my kids are at in, you know, I'm, know what's going on in both high schools. They're paying to use the ice. The elementary school pays to use the ice. Um. All the hockey kids used to pay the ice. We've just got the Eagles yesterday up to a, a, um, junior A team. Sycamore's minor hockey was voted, um, today. Uh, they got a big award for, uh, being the best minor hockey. Um, in, I think it's Okanagan. I don't know the title. So we're working really hard to put these groups, get our kids on the ice, be community and. What do we need to do to make? When, when we apply, I don't feel like we need to be on equal, like so if Camlum's wants ice and Sycamore's wants ice. I don't think that needs to be equal. It should be, you know what, Sycamore's, uh, January first. You got a month to tell us what ice you want, and then we're selling off everything else. Um, or whatever, go to our user groups. He, here's you got this window to get yourself together, whatever the dates are. I don't book hockey, so I have no clue. But, um, and then. Then selling off anything we have left. Right now, from what I've talked to the people, that it isn't even a, you know, if, if Cameron's wants something and Sycamore's wants something. It's not even a fair living food level field for them to go in. Um, other communities are getting our ice time ahead of us and we're not even. Competing on that. I don't think we should have to compete. Personally.
Thanks. Um, yeah, and it is Sycamore's and Area E, Director Martin's area as well, not just Sycamore's. I just want to correct that. Um, anyone else of, Council Beach?
Um, yeah, I, that was predominantly what I. Felt too, is that right now, we absolutely don't know how this. Arena manager is scheduling and planning for the future use of the building. It feels like. The user groups that aren't being responded to, that they're. Not interested, right? We've lost, uh, White Ball's ball camp that was. A great, a great asset to this community prior to COVID. We've lost it because of lack of interest in supporting it at the, at the arena. And I just think it's a detriment to our community and I'm glad that we're paying money towards the operation because. We need to use that as a leverage to make sure that our people in the area are being. Serviced by that arena like they always have been. And of course they have to make money, but the users have to, the primary users have to be locals first.
Thank you. Hey, anyone else? Counsel Bailey?
Uh, yeah, so you're having this meeting, I guess, coming up. I mean, it. And I, I wish you well. I don't think these are any new issues. I, it should be fairly easy to knock this out. So then I'd like to have this on the next council meeting. And I think we should be reviewing the, the service agreements coming up. So. Maybe that can be circulated to council so that we can have a, a proper discussion about. This and under no, understand what our roles, obligations are, or possibilities are as well. I think that. Should be part of the conversation. I think it's gotten to a point. And the frustration has gotten to the point, to be fair, that we owe ourselves to have that conversation. Whether this can be worked out with C S R D and some other things can be great. That could be the other option. But I don't think we should, as Counselor Bushell said, I think it's forty two years. It's probably time to take a look at it anyways. And, um, so if we could have this on the next council agenda, I think that would be a good time to get an update. How the next month goes and the, the, you know, the back and forth with you and Counselor, uh, Rona. And, uh, just go from there.
Yep, thank you. I just want to add, um. Let's also keep in mind that. We lost or the council or the, the contract we was giving to, uh, who was the? A Stady, Stadia, I think, and then bounced to C S R D. And then bounced to an election and then bounced to two C A Os that aren't even here anymore. So. I just want us just to be a little bit patient because you've got new players in this game trying to figure out. An old problem and be fair to everyone. So that's all I'm asking for is us to sit down. I, I think that all of us have now got our feet on the ground and know who's who in the zoo. So perhaps we can start figuring some things out, but just, yes, please be patient. Yeah, go ahead, Counsel Bushel.
Yeah, thank you. Going through the chair. It's okay. I just, you know, I know there's lots, been lots of changes. But they still got to open the doors. If you want to make money, you got to open the doors. It's like a. I can literally tell you, it's like a private club over there. It, the doors aren't open. You can't even get in the place. Unless there's a, a tournament going on, even then they got the doors closed. They're not a tournament, but I mean, uh.
Yeah, no, yeah, I understand. It hurt.
You can't make money if you, if you're not open. And, and if, if they have a staffing problem, I mean, when did James retire? I mean, have they posted? April? You know, have they posted? I mean, and who knows, you know, how long is Cal going to be there? They should be training and. Anyway, that's my.
Go ahead, Counsel Rich. We'll take one.
Um, I did think, yes, we have to be patient, but it's also time sensitive because the way the ice is booked. Um, and I do know a little bit about it, is it's booking now. There's about, so that's for minor hockey, figure skating. Which comes out of seminar, but services our kids, uh, the Eagles. Ice time's booked now. I think there's probably about five weeks and then the schedule be, will be made. So. We're not saying, oh, hold off for a month or two. When we hold off, what happens is we're now holding off for another year. Um, so, so I think it is time sensitive, right? That we do have to say, need some help here.
Absolutely. And I agree. And that meeting is set up for beginning of next week. We're just waiting for confirmation from Director Martin. So, okay.
Can I just make a mo, like, I, I, I do want to make sure this is a follow up on the next council agenda. So do you want me to make a motion or a recommendation? Or you'll just put it on, Kelly?
Yeah, I don't, whatever information we can gather will bring to council, correct?
No, I, I'd like to also have a chance to review the service agreements. If that could be sent around.
Most definitely. The service establishment bylaws.
That's right.
Have is we have a service establishment bylaw. It doesn't really have much in it, but that's what we have with Area E and C S R D and us where the two. The two participants. So yeah, I can send you any documentation related to the arena. I've got lots of information.
Yeah, I, I just want us to keep on this, like, it could be that we get the information and we. Decide, okay, this is going in the right way, or we want to have another discussion. I just want to make sure there's. Like a continuation here rather than.
Absolutely. There, there will be, for sure.
Yeah, I, I, I wish you really well. I, I like a lot, lots of. Well, I hope is coming out of this. It's just not a new issue. That's all. I mean.
Yeah, we understand. We get it. And it's, this has been a problem for a while. Counsel Evans, please.
Hi there. Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate, um, that we. We really made a good application to run that a couple of years ago and they gave it to New Stadia. So the council has been and will continue to. Fight to make it, uh, better for our community to be able to use that facility. We have been. Working on it. I mean, we put a good application and they chose. An organization to run it from, um, Quebec. So, you know, we are trying and, uh, we're behind you, Mayor Anderson, and, uh, we, we really. We are working on this and we're not going to stop pushing on it.
Great. Thanks, Counsel Evans.
Hey. Yeah, just from a financial point, because that's, um, my background. So it costs about nine hundred thousand to a million dollars. To run the arena each year. Uh, so that's what this, the bottom line is here of. And they get about a hundred and eighty thousand right now from user groups for, for booking. So that this tax, uh, requisition here, which ranges from. Is around six hundred thousand. So that's gets split, not evenly, but that gets split, let's just say forty sixty. So we pay sixty percent of that and I'm approximating and Area E pays forty. I think it's like thirty eight, sixty something. So. That's where Area E and the District of Sycamore's both get a say on how it's being operated. Because we're both, uh, paying for the subsidy of running this. And just for the record, this is actually small compared to some other arenas. It's not arenas and pools. It's always a deficit. So this is where we need to work with the stakeholders to make sure we're getting out of it what we want from our. Yeah, I just wanted to explain that really high level.
That's really good information.
Yeah, as if, yeah, if we're not collecting money on it, then our taxpayers will be. Taxed. Hi, Etta. Okay, is it, okay, one more and we can move on.
Just, thank you. Good information. And I think we also have to remember, Area E is. Our, there are kids, there are seniors, they are absolutely, so our minor hockey, some of our Eagles players. The people that are accessing the arena, the people that are paying the five bucks to pay, watch, they are coming from Camden South Squad, they're coming from Malacua, they're coming from. Swanassie Point. So I, I really don't think it's an Area E and a Sycamore's thing when, when I speak Sycamore's and our users, that's our. Community, right?
Sure.
That it's our kids and, and our, you know, old timers or, or whoever.
Thank you for reiterating that. Awesome. Okay, all right, let's move along. Oh, there's. Okay. All right, Daryl, I'm so sorry again. I stepped on your toes.
Playing with my emotions. Uh, hey, so just really high level, lots of stuff going on. I just wanted to kind of. Take your round and roll in. Uh, so July, I've been super busy, man. Replace the battery a little.
Yes. Next one should work sometimes.
Okay, so. Quarterly, the C S R D was having P TAC meetings, the Public Tax Advisory Committee for solid waste. A little bit of history on that. I'll show you a little timeline, but I think all short of it is. All Waste Management Plan conducted and completed twenty twenty two. Uh, by Morrison Hirschfield, C S R D. Coming out of that, they looked at M O E's guidelines. And they're going to require a full plan review. So that will have an impact on all of us.
Right now.
I think. So there's the timeline. They started the Call Waste Management Plan. It's just already back in nineteen ninety three. Couple of key dates I just wanted to identify was. Two thousand nine, they signed up for their waste plan. And they, they're, they're aiming to that in the future. And then. Twenty twenty two, that five year effectiveness review was completed by, by that firm that I just mentioned. Stemming from that assessment, there's a whole number of emerging issues and opportunities that are. Now summarized in the report. The next steps will be a public survey, summarize memos and prioritization of steps. And then they'll form a plan. It'll be. Over the next few years. If anybody wants a copy of that report, just get ahold of me and I could share that with you. A biofuel facility. So we're working towards substantial completion. Um, it worked. It's running. I was there yesterday. I. Saw a fire where we were. Thing spins and all the augers. Quite a cool facility. That's the boiler. It's huge. The guy's insulating back there. They're just putting finishing touches on things. This motor will be replaced. It's just a loner. They've been waiting months and months and months for the right motor. They've got that one in there. It's working. It's just little things like that. That'll be spun out when it comes in. And we'll be able to do the substantial completion. So you see a couple of lines coming out and going down to. Uh, Thompson Place, and then it feeds the west side of industrial park. Those two lines. These two lines head over to the anchor tenant there at Twin. We've got a couple more. These two lines head over to the anchor tenant there at Twin. We've got a couple more spots there, shoot up to the road and go north, so. So we're doing pretty good. Uh, contract, I was gonna have a fellow from Gallow Solutions. Comment after my presentation today. He's in the middle of a ton of stuff. So I just really high level wanna talk to you guys about, uh, what our last plan was when we last spoke. We had a little site meeting. I've. Left it wide open and, uh, we had a really good site meeting with the, the designer out there, so. We had a good discussion about what the track should look like, uh, because depending what you build. Uh, it'll, it'll dictate whether or not you get on the circuits. You wanna have at least a qualifying track so it can get some semblance of events here. So we had that discussion with him, talked about the scale of the track, complexity, how nice it would be to have a little kitty track beside the big people track. Uh, and then obviously there were tree issues in Pinnison Park. We'd identified that one little area down by Diamond Four, across from Diamond Four. As being kind of our preferred location. When we got on the site and started looking at. Um, that was just from their brochure. This was initially kind of what we were thinking. And the designer was just like, why would you go past that? You got enough room. And I, I really didn't think we had enough room there. He said we have plenty of room there. So my concern was it's pretty loaded with trees. He said that'd be awesome to have through the trees. So we, I was pretty excited coming out of that meeting. Um, they can do a, a lot of stuff with, with a good, a good design plan, so. Uh, knowing that we wanna move this way, we've talked about it in the finance meetings, we budgeted for this kind of thing. We have some money in the budget for design. Uh, after that meeting, I took the liberty of. Getting a little further information on this little piece of land. So we did some, we did some surveying and got it to him. And he's done a preliminary for us to look at, so. It's pretty exciting. That's, that's what it looks like. I can't really speak to it with a whole lot of knowledge. Other than that's the caboose. I know that. So it does fit in that footprint. And apparently it's a twenty-five second track, which would get us some of the qualifying around, so. Uh, I'm gonna get some more information. What I'd really like to get some input from, from y'all. You can ask some questions and then maybe, uh, maybe in August, we can bring this forward and really get rolling. It's kind of the numbers we were thinking and being in budgeting work. I was getting something we could probably do in house. I've got some ideas on the drainage. They have piping. You might be able to cheapen it up with some rock pets, so. We can, uh, we can have those discussions. The next step, like you said, the survey, survey and pop was done. Conceptual design, he's got that prepared. We kind of looked at it there. We can get this before you guys with a little more detail, maybe get. Uh, get the fellow to come and speak to it in August. And he's not too far away. He could rally at Truken, get this going. So we own the land, so it's nice. Uh, so this is done and it looks great and it's busy every day. Uh, and we are working on getting this area for parking. This is the tell us that's kind of. Yeah, it's just. Just beside the court, so, uh, I'll put a gate in and use it, but I need the permission. We're working with Tellus Real. Something Canada Day was super successful. Uh, we got onto the bar, speak, look at some stuff.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, they're all in packages like that. I didn't realize. It's cool. They had four guys at the same time yell, don't step on the wires. And then there was tons of people at night. Uh, compel water main, jump over there. We had a, a pre-con meeting yesterday. So we had the whole crew there. We walked up and down. So I'm not gonna lie, it's gonna be some challenges with that one, just in terms of traffic. And just feeling displaced and inconvenienced. We've, we've made a traffic plan. They've made a traffic plan and we, we've had our input. It'll be a moving and adjusted. Work as we go. Cause nothing's ever perfect on paper. I'm, I'm worried about coming off the highway. We wanna keep access to the church. There's, there's a bunch of things, so, um, I guess if anybody's asking. We couldn't do this much sooner due to the high water table. We can't wait much later because we wanna get it paved. So we're in that sweet spot. We, we really need to get going. Pretty complex traffic plan. Hope it works. If it doesn't, we'll adjust some stuff, right? Yeah, uh, but, uh, but there will be local traffic that. The challenge is, you know, some, somebody from across the highway coming with their boat going on the local, that's not what we mean, so. We're gonna have to try to keep it local residents and there will be people stationed. We're opting to pretty much shut that road down for a bit. It'll be a couple of months. Uh, they will leave the boat launch alone. They'll mail, they'll do the mailing through that intersection, put a little wrap and leave the boat launch alone until the end of summer. So they will. Yeah, that'll be wrapped it up really quick. Alhead Creek Culver, uh, was there on Monday morning for a pre-con meeting. And they're, they're, they're going. They're putting the bridge in place already and they, uh, just the level of. Monitoring and scrutiny. They, I think they caught a hundred and nineteen fish yesterday in the little nets. Oh, we had to measure them all and weigh them all. Yeah.
Did they tag them?
There's a little. Yeah, so they're, they're in there, they're, they're monitoring. Lots of layers.
Got lots of bugs and fish here in town.
Expensive culvert.
Yeah, it really is. It really is. So yeah, they're diverting the water right from the, I guess, the, the side to the north side. Uh, we've got some. Coffer down, the coffer down built. Planted over through there. There's a few services. It's a big operation. It's. Yeah, but they know what they're doing. So that's ongoing. Uh, this is our plant, you know, uh, I don't. Uh, what later, some event, but, uh, today we had an army show up. They're cleaning up our phosphorus lagoon. Last week in-house, we, we cleaned out the drying bed, so we're, we're waiting for. These guys to discharge into there, so ongoing maintenance there, so it's busy around PW. Two other things going on. Uh, we are pushing hard to get the wastewater stream. Facility registered as MOE. That's a very complex thing. We'll talk about that. Um, researching outdoor hotel rank options. We're looking. You know, opportunities for that, getting some pricing, LED conversions for our streetlights. We've got some prices in and we've. Uh, we're gonna get going on that. More street lift station. We're looking to get independent power there. Currently it's fed on the sidewalk. And then a bunch of pre-con meetings, uh, the Dairy Queens got going on their grubbing. They're starting two miles. Uh, rolling now. I'll head Culver, propel west waterline, healing center on Friday. I've got a meeting. So yeah, it's getting super busy. And then biofuel, we're, we're basically substantially, I'm thinking next week. Water restrictions, as you've probably seen, we're at level two, stage two now, so. Got the about they're going up trying to educate people on that. And we picked a location for the fire lantern. It'll be at the top of. Each park right now to the future water. The people have spoken. That's really where they want it. Those tables for the beer artists.
Thank you, Daryl. That's great. Lots of stuff going on. Thanks. Counselor Beach.
Um, Daryl, um, to the chair. Where's the, the supply for the biofuel right now coming from?
Uh, they brought, what they brought in was right from Fink, right from Enderby. They brought their own stuff right now. We're not burning much. It's, that was more just a test run. Way too hot.
Right.
Yeah, don't need heat right now. Don't need help. Okay.
But have we done, we, like, have we done a plan for?
Well, the, the.
Source would be.
Yeah, so they will, they will manage the source for the first two years. That is the plan. So they're gonna build it and run it for two years and that includes bringing in the wood as needed.
Oh, okay.
Anyone else?
Counselor Bailey. So you'll really test it at full tilt in the fall.
Yeah, really. Yeah, we'll fire it up at the end of September. It's really tested out.
Yeah. And then, so there's two more buildings that could be, cause you have two more.
Yeah, more than two buildings.
Yeah, we have more than.
Yeah, okay. Feed more than that off those lines.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah.
So how many people are connected right now or will be?
Uh, so one side and then, so we know the, the anchor tenants, that's quite a big area. And then we've got, uh, I think two doors down is expressed interest and. But another one in the corner for sure with an auction for another. So we got two in the air.
That's awesome.
Yeah, it's great.
Good, good news story. Counselor Rich.
Through the chair, Daryl, does Capel know that this is happening to them? Like, has someone gone around with door knockers and hung it on their door and, and they? Heard it's coming?
Yeah, so, so we've, we've done, like, obviously the social media blitz, which is only so good. But the contractor is charged for hitting every door and doing the surrounding areas. So they're gonna do white pines as well and, and shushua.
Yeah, good. Counselor McCabe, did you wanna ask that?
I think the contractor's done a good job of notifying the locals. Uh, they door knocked every door and they've handed out contact information and. I think it's been, um, pretty good so far.
Excellent. Anyone else have any? Any questions for Daryl? Thanks, Daryl. You're doing a great job.
No, I just wanna say thanks. Good work. We'll get over for a tour.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to, we'll do a ribbon cutting or something, but maybe before that, we get over there. Marshmallows?
Thanks, Daryl. Great job. Good job. Lots of good stuff going on. Okay, moving along. Strategic priorities and then council reports. So are you gonna bring up the strategic priorities list? Does anyone have anything that they would like to comment on their strategic priorities? All right, then let's start. Counselor Rich.
I went to, uh, Canada Day and it was wonderful. Volunteered at the Beer Gardens all day and night. Saw you. Yes, yeah, that, that's about it for the month for me. It was pretty low-key for me.
Thank you, Counselor Bushell.
Through the chair, um, attended the Floki unveiling, uh, the beach at two miles. So that was, uh, quite a few people there. It was good. Thank you. So lots of fun. Uh, I think the flock arts were very happy. Uh, planning and development committee, uh, Scott and Sarah and Stephanie had, uh, the last meeting went really well. Lots of developments on the, on the go and. Looking forward to, some of the stuff will be on tonight's council, regular council meeting, so. Yeah, that's about it. Just working lots. That's, that's all.
Awesome. Counselor Evans.
Yeah, not much, uh, in July. Just been kept busy with, uh. My day job and, um, looking forward to two weeks from now when we can hang out for Family Day Saturday and. Cook up some hot dogs and burgers and hang out with everybody.
Cool. Thank you. Counselor Bailey.
Uh, planning and development meetings, um, went to, geez, I don't know if this was this month or last month. Went to tourism, uh, meeting. I think we had another one with us, so just, we're starting to get ready to do our twenty-twenty-four plan. And so Harley and, uh, has been spearheading that, so there were some really good discussions around that and. You know, in line with council priorities and, and I think it'll be quite a good plan. Um, had a, Ord and I actually, you probably forgot about this, feels like, uh, a million years ago, we had a good tour of Silver Sands. Um, park, really quite a nice park. I've never been in there, but some of the zoning changes and, uh, things are coming up. We also met with Kelly and Scott on a number of different things around that as well. Yes, of course, it's. But, um, yeah, so it's been a busy month, but I think certainly some of the stuff that council is gonna consider tonight with zoning changes. Lot of work has been put into it. A lot of work has been put into it by Counselor Bushell, talking to folks and, um. Yeah, so that'll be up for your consideration, but lots of, I think, good things. And then I guess the big, the big thing is, um. And I wanna do a shout out to Kelly on the, another thing that you'll be considering tonight is the phase development agreement. And just, that's gone into planning and development and, uh, council will consider it, but the phenomenal job that you've done on that, Kelly. And the, the, the very big. Possibilities that there is for Sycamore. So there's been a lot of work done there and, uh, I just wanted to say, thank you for everybody that had a role in that.
Really thanks. Thanks, Counselor Bailey. Thanks, Kelly. Counselor Beach.
Um, yeah, I have trouble remembering all of the, the order of the months, but, um. Attended the housing open house on, uh, July sixth and had a nice chat with the Earth Right rep. And that looked at many, the tiny homes. And thought about the potential of that. That was great. Um, planning and development meeting on July nineteenth. Always, uh, learn a lot at those. Um, and then I've been enjoying the music in the park events. Uh, that started in July as well and seeing the turnout increase all the time.
Excellent. Was it good on Monday? I didn't make it. I thought it was well attended. Awesome. That's great to hear. Yeah. Counselor McCabe.
Yeah, not much. Um, went to Floki's beach opening. Ethan Markin Monday was great, not canceled. That was nice. And, um, yeah, that's about it. I went to the housing, the open house, housing. That was quite well attended. And, uh, that's about it.
Thank you. Um, I as well went to, I was at Floki's unveiling of, uh, Floki Beach as well. And, uh, it, you know, it was well attended and, and, um, as I mentioned, you know, they did set. The, the pace in Sycamore's for our, our hockey, uh, kids and the talent that's come out of here since, so. Um, it was, uh, yeah, it was, it was a good event. And I went to Canada Day, of course. And, um, this coming up week, meeting with, uh, John and Ronan Kelly, uh, this week we had a tourist plot team coming up. Uh, the CSRD meeting didn't have a lot that would impact us, but they did, w- w- we do have something that's gonna impact us that. I'd like to discuss now, maybe make a, uh, a recommendation. And that is the, the hospital. The Shushua, um, big hospital, I think it's. So they have been in dire straits since two oh six with finances, money allocated to them. And something has always come up. So they're doing patchwork repairs. The doc that presented is talking about the ICU being shut down so that they will have to transport patients to Vernon or to. Um, Colona because of financing and interior health not recognizing that. Um, this money has been allocated or the need to improve our hospital. That's a hospital that impacts all of us. It's our closest hospital. So I would like to make a recommendation that council write a letter to. Um, interior health or ministry that we are in support of, um, the Shushua Hospital, uh, getting its funding. And, um, the community that, uh, it supports is huge and it's critical at this point in time. As our populations grow. So we do wanna keep our healthcare, as much of our healthcare as we possibly can. So I think it's really imperative that we support it. And I would encourage everyone, every local, um, to also. Send letters in, in support of funding for the, um, the hospital as well. It just seems to get. And I haven't sat on the hospital board for very long. I've been part of the CSR D board for very long. However, I do find that, I'm feeling that it's being pushed back, pushed back, pushed back and. For no apparent, no really good reasons, other than there's money that needs to go somewhere else. But if the money's been allocated, the money needs to stay allocated and not shoved off to somewhere else, so. Um, that's a recommendation that I would like to, go ahead.
Now, I just wanna add, so is it for money for the ICU?
It's money for the entire hospital. They've patched together a lot of ducting, you know, and perhaps we can do some research on. Uh, the hospital and what, uh, uh, what their front was for and allocated, money allocated that they're still missing. But in this particular case, it's become so critical that the ICU, because of venting and mostly not staff. They've got more than enough staff. They've got healthy, a healthy group of docs and a healthy group of, of nurses. Their facility's falling apart. Is basically it. Is basically it. So I'd like to make a recommendation that we send out a letter. And Counsel Bushel seconds. All in favor? Carrie. And then, yeah, okay. Um, so and, um. The other thing I wanted to mention was that the watershed info session is going to be held on August. Sarah, correct me if I'm wrong. I'm going to say August the fifteenth at the Recreation Center.
Correct.
And, um. This is just an information session to let residents know exactly what the watershed council provides to our community, what sort of research they do, because there will be a vote. Um, on a parcel tax, which we historically have been paying, but now it's it's, um, become, um. I I want to say up for renewal.
It's expired.
It's expired for five years, so, um, after five years, so. I encourage all of our community to, um, um, get informed and educate themselves on the the services that they provide. Okay. We have gallery time, so. Go ahead, Deb. Take it away.
Uh, just wanted to do a real quick update because we've got our pickleball tournament this summer week and as Daryl said, the pickleball courts are done. And I just wanted to give you guys a quick update too. So in two years, we tripled our memberships and we tripled site visits. And we're expecting that those are going to be even higher. What we're hearing from people like John, a lot of who worked in these words that they've never seen. You know, like utilized so much. So I just again want to thank council. I think that one was a thing. And they aren't seeing tennis players still there too. It's just the utilization in, it's just like, and. And we're full for our competitive tournament, not full for the recreational or like lower level, but that's not surprising. When people are in that lower level, the tournament seems competitive, right? So. But the competitive, we've been maxed out from almost the moment we pulled the trigger and can't set it up, so.
Awesome. Excellent. Do we have anyone online? No? It, go ahead, Ryan.
Is ownership of the arena by Sicamous going to be on, direct for discussion at this meeting that you attend next week?
Yeah, you know what? There'll probably be a bit of discussion about it. I, you know. It it's us own and there's good and bad. Us owning it is a huge financial impact and we better be ready for that, you know, so. I think the discussion has been had several times and I'm, and I, and I think we've kind of meant, okay, let's just. Leave it for now and continue the way it is, but. There's always that possibility, I guess, um, but it would be definitely a community. It would be a community decision because it would be a community tax impact. Yeah. Anyone else? All right. We're going to adjourn this meeting. Recommendation of the committee, the whole meeting for July twenty-six, twenty twenty-three be adjourned, the time being two thirty. Counsel Beach, Counsel Rich, all in favor? Carrie, we're done.
Thanks, guys. Thanks for being here.
That's fine.